Next we'll move into number 15, Bills to Doos. Well, first reading of Bill 2012-83.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to the utility cap exemption.
Tell us more, Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This bill would eliminate the cap on the utility tax exemption, which is currently about $35,000 for manufacturers and $45,000 plus interest for the last eight years for the state complex.
Any other questions for Drew on 83? Moving on, we'll go into first reading of 2012-84.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to stormwater floodplain management.
I see here, Mr. Scrivener.
Yes, request that we suspend the rules for this particular ordinance.
Tim again, Drew, first and second, and vote, or it's suspended unless?
Unless to object.
Okay. I need to have a second, though.
Yes.
Okay, I have a first and second. Do more than, if you don't want to do that, please hold up your hand. Okay, the rules are officially suspended. Roger.
This is an ordinance that would amend the floodplain management code that the city approved back in September. When we sent this over to SEMA, we had missed the section that deals with mobile homes, and they have asked us to add that to this floodplain management bill so that it would include those areas for the flood insurance rate maps. And the reason for suspending the rules is we need to have this approved prior to November the 2nd, when the new flood insurance rate maps are due to go into effect. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Roger? Seeing none, we'll have third reading, please.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to stormwater floodplain management.
Seeing none, roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes. Ralph had to make a point of provage, by the way. Next we have first reading of 2012-85.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing the disposal of said property.
Chief Rennick.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you just recently approved the bids over 50,000, this would be accompanying that in the sense that these are the current air packs, the SCBA's, that are being used by the fire, excuse me, by the fire department and would be replaced by those that you just approved.
Okay, any questions of chief on 85? All right, thanks, sir. Moving on, we'll have first reading of 2012-86.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with USIC Locating Service Incorporated for wastewater utility locating services.
Roger.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a bill that would authorize the bids that we took for locating our utilities for our sewer department. Currently, USIC has the contract, and they are the low bidder, again this time at 32,500, so we would recommend approval. Be happy to answer questions.
Any questions, Roger? Seeing none, we'll have first reading of 2012-87.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing a street right-of-way on Chestnut Street between East Atchison and East Dunkland Street.
Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This would vacate Chestnut in front of Lincoln. It came at the request of Lincoln in part to enforce parking tickets and in part to enforce their smoking ban. We would retain an easement for emergency vehicles and retain an easement for all utilities underneath that street. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Drew, on 87? Seeing none, we'll have first reading of 2012-88.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by establishing taxi cab loading zones on Monroe Street and Commercial Way.
Roger.
This would put into code a practice that already exists. The taxi cabs have two spaces that they are currently using in the downtown area that are loading zones, and this would allow them in the evening to have this designated as a taxi cab stand. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Roger on 88? Seeing none, we'll have first reading of 2012-89.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending ordinance 150010 by causing the appropriation to survive the 2012-2013 budget year.
Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Phil said, this would amend 15010, which was the supplemental appropriation for the fire department. That's when you approved $815,000 from the reserve fund to be utilized for fire protection equipment. Turns out, they won't be able to complete those purchases by the end of the year, and so we just need to roll that over into the next budget year. We are requesting that you suspend the rules and vote on this tonight because we'll run out of our budget year if we don't.
Mr. Schulte, as the sponsor, what say you?
Mr. Mayor, I request that we suspend the rules and take this bill up tonight.
Okay. Are there two members present that would not want to do that? The rules are officially suspended. We'll have third reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending ordinance 15010 by causing the appropriation to survive the 2012-2013 budget year.
Any questions of staff on 2012-89? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Lubert?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next we'll have first reading of 2012-90.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $15 million principal amount of Sewerage System Revenue Bonds State of Missouri Direct Loan Program Series 2012 of the city of Jefferson, Missouri for the purpose of extending and improving the city's sewerage system, prescribing the form and details of the bonds and the agreements made by the city to facilitate and protect their payment and prescribing other related matters.
Roger.
Thank you, Mayor. We have completed our plans for our Cold Junction Sewer Project. That will extend a new sewer line across the Missouri River on the western side of Jefferson City and run down to our sewer plant. That project in itself is about $13.5 million. That's advertised for bids right now, so we're at the point that we need to obtain the revenue to be able to make payments on that contract once we open the bids and get it awarded. So it's time to sell these bonds, and we're looking forward to getting that project started. So I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions, Roger, on 91? I'm sorry, on 90? All right, seeing none, we'll have first reading of 91, please.
An ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project for Unilever Manufacturing U.S. Incorporated, a Delaware corporation consisting of the acquisition and installation of new equipment at the existing plant, authorizing the city of Jefferson, Missouri to issue taxable industrial development revenue bonds, Unilever Manufacturing U.S. Incorporated Project Series 2012 in a principal amount not to exceed $23,280,000 to finance the cost of such project, authorizing and approving certain documents and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Nathan.
The only thing I can add to the title is these are economic development incentives, which will be payable by Unilever through lease payments.
Okay, any other questions of staff? All right, next we'll have first reading of 2012-92.
An ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project for ALPLA Incorporated, a Georgia corporation consisting of the acquisition and installation of new equipment at the existing plant, authorizing the city of Jefferson, Missouri to issue taxable industrial development revenue bonds, ALPLA Incorporated Project Series 2012 in a principal amount not to exceed $2 million to finance the cost of such project, authorizing and approving certain documents and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Nathan.
Again, economic development incentive for ALPLA, again, repayable by ALPLA through lease payments back to the city.
All right, any questions of staff? Moving on, we'll have first reading of 2012-93.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending the 2011-2012 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating funds within the general fund, public arts, and re-appropriating it in the 2012-2013 budget, general funds, public art.
Ms. Carroll.
I request that we suspend the rules and vote tonight.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Are there two people that do not want to do that? All right.
Just a question, why do we need to, is there a reason we need to suspend?
Go ahead, Carrie.
They've done some fundraisers, and we wanted to get that money in at the end, before the end of this budget year.
Everyone else okay with that? The rules are officially suspended. Well, third reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending the 2011-2012 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating funds within the general fund, public arts, and re-appropriating it in the 2012-2013 budget, general funds, public art.
Okay, any comment or debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next we'll go into bills pending. We talked about 24, or, excuse me, 74, 75, 76 was put on the informal calendar. Now we'll have third reading of 2012-77.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Section 3.5 of the Flexible Benefit Plan for city employees as originally adopted by Ordinance 12-181 as most recently amended by Ordinance 14-725.
Questions of staff? Debate? Roll call, please.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next we'll have third reading of 2012-78.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with HAWK Transit Advertising.
Roger.
Thank you, Mayor. The city did take requests for proposals to put advertising on the side of our buses to try to generate some revenue. We did only have one response, and that was from HAWK Transit Advertising. They are a business that has been in this business for over 90 years, and so we've got a good contractor here to do this work. It will, what they've offered us is 50% of the proceeds for the first year and guaranteed $6,000 per year every year thereafter. So we would recommend approval of this contract.
All righty, thank you, Roger. Any questions of staff on 2012-78? Council debate? Roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next we'll have third reading of 2012-79.
An ordinance amending Section 19401 Motor Vehicles in Traffic Schedule J Parking Prohibited, Subparagraph A of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to a portion of Norman Drive.
Roger.
Good evening, Mayor. We're bringing it up on the screen. This is a picture of Norman Drive, and you had the two gentlemen from the bus company that talked about this this evening. About, the bus company, obviously, is at the bottom of the picture with all the buses in the lot, and then about halfway up the street on the right side is the FedEx business. And they had made a request to our Traffic and Transportation Commission to restrict parking, to allow them to be able to back tractor-trailers into their dock. The problem is that there's a lack of parking in the area, and a lot of the employees that work in that area are parking on the street on both sides, which makes it difficult to get in and out of the driveways, especially with a tractor-trailer. The Traffic and Transportation Commission looked at this, and yes, they do have cones setting out there on the road right now to try to keep folks from parking in areas so that they can back into the dock. The gentleman from the bus company indicated they could drive down and turn around and come back up the hill and back in easier. That works fine for a straight truck, but if you know how to drive a tractor-trailer, your mirrors, you're on the blind side, you really can't see as well if you try to back in from that side. Drivers always want to back in, driving in and then backing in instead of turning around and try to back in from the blind side. We looked at this, and when you park vehicles on both sides of the road, it does make the road quite narrow, and all of the vehicles coming in and out of here are buses and trucks. So the Traffic and Transportation Commission looked at this as a safety concern and is recommending that we simply remove the parking on the west side so that it gave more room for trucks to get in and out of this street. So be happy to answer any questions from there.
Mr. Henry.
Roger, did you have a chance to speak with Representative from FedEx?
I did. I went out and met with the manager and talked to him and told him what we were proposing. He did support that. The only thing that he commented on was that some of the drivers actually parked so close to their driveway that it made it difficult to even get in and out of the driveway because they were blocking a portion of the driveway with where they were parking. So we, I'd indicated to him, we could actually paint some yellow paint on the curb to try to keep that from happening so that they weren't parking that close. I understand the bus company's concern with eliminating it all on one side. That means all their drivers that can't park in their lot down there would have to park on one side, but they're already walking down this street in the morning in the dark, so we're really not changing anything from what is already existing, in my opinion.
Go ahead, Mayor.
And they're not in agreeance with the, I guess, this cone setup that the bus company's done? They're not actually in agreeance with that?
The, it's working now, but, I mean, you have to keep the cones in the street to keep them from parking there. If you move the cones, you know, if it snows or something, we're going to have to get the cones out of the way. They can't be there all the time. So it's not a good situation to have to put cones in the street to keep people from parking there.
Bob.
Roger, you mentioned that Traffic Commission had indicated that they were concerned about a safety issue, and we heard the testimony tonight that they have concern about a safety issue, too. And I guess I'm wondering, are we talking about removing the parking to protect against having an auto collision, whereas maybe allowing the parking protects against some pedestrian being hit? Do you think that there's a, is that a valid argument that pedestrians would be more protected if we allowed at least some parking along there?
Well, I guess I would look at it in that today, when you're parking on both sides of the road, they have to either walk in the grass along the side, or they have to walk in the street. And do you want to try to walk on a narrow street that, you know, I think they mentioned 71 buses are coming out of that lot. If you're one of the first ones there, you're fine because you might be leaving first, but if you're one of the last ones getting there, all of these buses are leaving, and you're having to walk down the street as they leave. The way the Traffic and Transportation Commission looked at this is if we allow more space by eliminating the parking on one side, then they, at least, there's a lot more room and a lot more area there provided for them to walk or for buses and trucks to drive up and down the street.
Is this, is this an issue that would have never come to our attention, and the parking would have been ongoing, as it has been, I guess, for maybe many years, had, without accidents, had it not become an issue for FedEx to be able to better maneuver their trucks? So I think, in my mind at least, a reasonable compromise to, and we make accommodations to try to encourage business all the time, it would seem to me that a reasonable compromise would be to prohibit parking in the area that is required of FedEx to be able to maneuver their truck and then go ahead and allow parking in the area where it has been ongoing for some time. And I realize it's not an ideal situation, and it may even be, we may be even ignoring our own, you know, the way we normally do things, or even the way that code suggests that we should do things on this particular street. But you have, I think, what, about three businesses? Is there a storage business, FedEx and the bus company? So are there more than that? It looks to me like we basically have three entities down that street.
Yeah, there's a driveway right up next to Industrial that the business uses, but they also have access off of Industrial. So the people that drive down the street are primarily three businesses.
Okay, and I suppose that some of the people driving might be people who are renting storied spaces. So, but I would guess that other than the coming and going of the bus company employees early in the morning and late in the afternoon, that most of the traffic is their traffic. They're the ones creating the traffic and so forth. So, you know, again, I suppose I'm just trying to look for a reasonable compromise where we can continue to accommodate the business and yet help solve what has, you know, really, the genesis of this whole thing is FedEx's maneuverability. And if we can solve that by prohibiting parking on that section, it looks to me like the rest of it could remain the status quo.
Okay, Dr. Pope.
I concur with Councilman Scrivener. It seems like we may be giving up more parking spots than actually all these neighbors are asking us to give up. First point, there are 71 buses and 71 drivers, and if we take this parking away, they can't park on Industrial, and I don't know where these people would park. Two, I don't think FedEx has 71 trucks in and out multiple times a day. So these buses, 71 of them, are out in the morning, back in the morning, out in the afternoon, back. So they're making four trips, times 71. That's much more traffic than FedEx. FedEx needs to be able to get their trucks in, that's for sure, but the whole street, I don't think that's necessary. My other point is, and we need, it reminds me of the barber shop program that we had years, some years back, and the neighbors came to a compromise up on Madison Street, if you recall. The neighbors came to a compromise and then came to us, and we instituted the program that the neighbors on that street wanted. The other thing I don't understand is if we have a problem of pedestrians in the dark in the morning, there's much more traffic on this street than, say, on Hoover Drive off of West Main. They have streetlights on Hoover Drive, much less traffic than here, and why don't we have streetlights on this street?
Roger.
And if we don't, and we have that much traffic, we need to think about it. So I hope we don't give up more parking than we need to. If we can satisfy all the neighbors and keep the parking up at the high end of it, we should try to do that, seems like to me.
Roger, do you have a comment, or?
I really honestly have no idea why there's no streetlights. I would have anticipated that all city streets should have had streetlights, and I don't know why they're not there.
Dr. Pope.
We need to look into that because it doesn't speak well for annexation.
Yeah, the comments on 79. Go ahead, Carrie.
So would we be able to amend, thank you, this, I know you mentioned we can't have the cones out there, so I don't know what the actual solution would be, other than signage, or I guess it can't really be painted, but would we be able to make an amendment to make that solution?
Rick.
I'd like to put on the informal calendar, if that's okay, to come up with appropriate solutions that everybody's in agreement on.
Okay. It's on the informal, unless we do something different. Looks like it's there. All right, moving on to 2012-80. Third reading, please.
An ordinance amending Section 19401 Motor Vehicles in Traffic Schedule O Parking Time Limit Zones, Subparagraph F, Time Zone F of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by modifying a portion of the 700 block of West Main Street.
Roger, you're still up.
This is another parking issue, and hopefully Bill's going to bring up the picture on this one as well. But this is on West Main, just west of Bolivar. It's where we transitioned from an area that is commercial into a residential area. There are some businesses right here that complained, and this came to our Traffic and Transportation Commission and asked us to put a two-hour time limit on parking in the area that's shown in red. And this would help transition so that people today come to this area and park all day long because they're employed at a business close to this. So it would allow some turnover for those businesses that are adjacent to the street right here. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on 2012-80? Dr. Pope.
The two-hour limit is during business hours, right?
Yeah, that's right. We don't enforce anything after 5:00.
Okay. Bob.
Is this entirely commercial? We don't have residents parking there? Maybe someone that maybe works at night and is parking there during the day? Or do you have any way to know?
When we held the hearing at Traffic and Transportation, we did send notices to all of the immediate adjacent folks, and we did have a great turnout of the people from the neighborhood. The neighbors all were supportive of this. A number of those are rental properties, and they were certainly okay with this because it didn't come up the street further than what it would cause a problem for them, and it was in front of the businesses that were making the request.
Any other questions on 2012-80? Seeing none, debate? Roll call, please.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Lubert?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we'll have third reading of 2012-81.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Section 19401 Motor Vehicles in Traffic Schedule J Parking Prohibited, Subparagraph A of the Code of the City of Jefferson pertaining to a portion of Wicker Lane.
Roger.
Another parking issue, and I believe Bill's going to bring this one up on the screen as well. This is Wicker Lane off of Missouri Boulevard, an area that, the street's very narrow. There's no curb and gutter on Wicker Lane. We've got a couple of new businesses that have opened, and overflow parking has, especially during the lunchtime, has been on Wicker Lane. It's made it difficult for people to get into the businesses down Wicker Lane. So this request was reviewed, and the recommendation is to remove parking where it's shown in red that's basically adjacent to the businesses on Missouri Boulevard to prevent that problem. This is an item that we've worked with the police chief and have implemented on a temporary basis at this point to try to resolve the problem that was going on out there.
Okay, any questions of staff? Rick? Oh, I'm sorry, thought I saw a hand. Any questions of Roger? Debate? Bob?
Roger, what are, not that it matters necessarily, the names of the businesses, but are you saying that that is people that are doing business with those businesses? Are they retail in nature, or what kind of businesses are they?
Yeah, they're all restaurants. And they've just, it's the new ones that have opened up on Missouri Boulevard. You know how it is when a new restaurant opens, everybody's got to go there. At lunchtime, they simply overfill- It probably will go away in due time, but at least for now, that it's been pretty steady.
Okay, any other questions on 81? Seeing none, debate? Roll call, please.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Next, we'll have third reading of 2012-82.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2011-2012 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, by appropriating additional funds from the General Fund to various accounts for fuel and parts.
Okay, I see that there's a substitute here. Sean, what say you?
Request that we take up the substitute.
Okay, first and second. It's getting kind of late, I can't remember.
Yeah, I just want to make sure if those of you identified that there was a substitute that was emailed out and then a second substitute that went out today. I think she's called it substitute two.
Okay.
So, if you'd like to.
Which one are we going to bring up, Sean? Number two?
Then you need a second, and just a voice vote is sufficient.
Okay. I have a motion to bring up substitute number two. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Prather. Discussion on bringing up substitute number two. First of all, let's hear what substitute number two does before we vote on bringing it up.
Okay, this bill originally would have added money to the budget for fuel and chemicals and also some fuel additives. We're getting towards the end of the year and for various reasons, there wasn't sufficient funds in there. Substitute one would add additional money because for some reasons that I detailed in our memorandum, our initial calculation of how much supplemental fuel was needed to get to the end of the year was incorrect and that has to do with the way that our accounting system, how we were logging some things into the accounting system. And that's not the finance department that was doing that so much as getting information to the finance department. The second substitute was we discovered that we'd received some money from Cole County early in the year for sirens and that money has never been added into the budget and so we need to add that in just to clear the books, as it were. So, that is what the substitute does. And substitute two incorporates substitute one, so it is the cumulative substitute.
Okay, any questions? There's a first and second. Now, we will vote on whether or not to bring up the substitute, or excuse me, the bill as substituted, because there's two, right? Close enough? Okay, debate on doing that. Dr. Pope.
From the wastewater fund, we're transferring in $73,000 for chemicals and $20,000 for...
$20,000 for oil, gas, and antifreeze. That would come from their own reserve funds. On the general fund side, $220,000, oh, I'm sorry, that's the total amount, $125,000 for gas, oil, and antifreeze, $95,000 for parts, and then recognizing $53,417.16 is miscellaneous income for, and we're putting it under the civil defense, that would be the siren money. Can we go slower?
Okay, any other questions on what we're getting ready to do as far as the substitute bill? Mr. Lubert.
Is the $220,000 an additional demand on general revenue, I take it?
Yes.
And is that available without tapping reserves or where does that come from?
Well, I always see when you get into those kinds of questions. Terry, can you explain what fund we're taking that out of? I believe it's coming out of reserves, yes.
Okay, at this point in time, unless there's more debate, I'm sorry, Bob?
I guess that's what reserves are from.
Sure, go ahead, always.
The, just for those who might be listening, could you give us just a brief explanation of, I don't know, as a percentage of the total fund, it's all that much money, but could you give us a brief explanation why we're off $220,000 for parts and fuel and so forth?
Sure. Parts is actually, well, let me just kind of go through all of them. There are a number of different reasons. Chemicals is chemicals they add into the sewage treatment and that was way up this year and that is because of the hotter, drier weather affects that process in a way that I can't and won't explain, needing more chemicals. They also ran a little low on gas and as did the general fund, so that wastewater needs $20,000 for gas and the general fund, which would be all the other vehicles, is $220,000. The reason for that is twofold. Gas prices are up and we're actually driving less, but gas prices are up and that's bumped that up. But also, when we made the estimate last year in the budget for how much money should be budgeted, that was based on the previous year's budget, but did not include in that money that had been supplementally appropriated that year. And so, if you, you may have noticed, if you've been on the council as you have for several years, that we are doing this year after year and it's really the same money we're adding each time. That we will correct in the next budget cycle now that we've identified what caused that problem. And I was simply just unaware that that's the way the budget was being calculated, but that's what we need to get to the end of this year. And then the parts is largely, I'm told, tires, that we're driving through tires at a faster rate than what we... Roger's trying to tell me something, but I have no idea what it is. Go ahead.
Well, and if you've bought any tires recently, the price of tires has gone up significantly.
Ouch.
So, yeah, that's the thing that has really affected the parts budget is the price of tires is much higher than what it has been.
Bob?
You said something interesting to me. You said that we are driving through more tires and I'm wondering if maybe we have changed brands of tires or changed the model of tire, if you will, and if maybe we need to do a little cost calculation and see if maybe something more expensive might last longer and be more cost effective.
I think that's something that we're certainly wanting to look at and I think that Mr. Schwartz has some excellent ideas that we're going to look at next year in terms of how we buy tires. But, you know, as I told you all some time ago, one of our plans is to have more vehicles but keep them longer. Well, one of the consequences that is, is you have more tires to buy.
Sure.
You know, and I think, you know, like the Tahoe's tires that we're using now are a little more expensive than the police vehicles that we used to be able to buy. They had a little cheaper tires, so.
Just an editorial comment, and of course, I guess we do that labor ourselves and don't incur a cash cost perhaps, but one of the significant costs of changing tires is the cost of labor, changing and balancing and so forth and so if you can get a tire to last longer, sometimes it can be more cost effective.
Absolutely.
Any more discussion on 2012-82 as proposed to be substituted? Seeing none, no debate? We'll have roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
You can voice vote, it's just a motion to substitute.
Okay, voice vote, please. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Now, we'll vote on the original bill as substituted. Did you third read it? I can't remember at this point. She told me she already did that. I was going to ask because I know you would ask, but no, she has. With that being said, any more debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Weber.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Okay, next we'll go into resolutions and we have to go back in time a little bit here and we're going to ask for a motion for Resolution 2012-16 that would dealt with Ms. Stratman. Second, it's been moved and seconded, discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray.
The resolution for Ms. Stratman, we missed it earlier.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Okay, next we'll vote on, or we'll bring up Resolution 2012-17 and we'll entertain a motion, please.
It's been moved and seconded.
Roger.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a project that we've been working on for quite some time. It involves a pipe that has collapsed on Missouri, on Industrial Drive, excuse me, next to the railroad tracks. The pipe's actually collapsed under the railroad and we've been trying to work out an agreement with them. They've just agreed to participate in the cost and agreed to sign the agreement. We have now advertised that project. Because the road has already started settling in the area and we've got traffic control out there that restricts the lane, we would like to move forward with this project as soon as we open bids and get the contractor to work out there and try to get that project completed yet this year. We put a very tight timeline on it. The railroad put an even tighter timeline on it. They're only giving the contractor four days to work on their tracks and get the pipe in underneath their tracks. We were a little more generous. There's a total of 30 days in the whole contract. But the reason this is a resolution is we are asking for approval this evening to award the contract to the low bidder once we open that and allow the city administrator to sign that contract to move this forward. Any questions?
I have a question. You said they only allow four days. Are they going to shut the trains down during that four days and is there a financial penalty to the contractor or the city if they don't get it done in four days?
Yes. The tracks actually have to be picked up and removed, then a new pipe put in and the railroad actually will come in and then put their ballast back and then put the rails back in, but they've only got four days from the time they start on the railroad piece until they have to have it done. There is a liquidated damage clause related to that as well as clause for Industrial Drive because we'll be closing that and putting the pipe across Industrial also. It's a 42-inch pipe.
So, the contractor's actually going to cut the rail bed and dig down and put the pipe in then?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions on Resolution 17? Debate, roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Motion passes. No one signed up under 19, anything under 20 from the council? Seeing nothing? Any new business or unfinished business to bring before the council this evening? Mr. Weber.
I would like to thank Janice and her staff for enforcement efforts and cleanup of the small engine repair business on East McCarty Street. Good job.
Thank you, Janice. Okay, anything else on 21 or 22? Moving on to 23, any scheduled reports this evening? Next, we'll entertain a motion to approve the closed session minutes of October 1st.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. I'll oppose, same sign. Next, we have adjournment. Is there a motion?
It's been moved.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye.